Okay, and we will call the meeting back to order at four sixteen P M. And we are moving on to action item number five. Short term rental regulations with a report presented by the C D A O.
Thank you Chair, I'm presenting the short term rental regulations, this was directed on July ninth and further this this conversation has stemmed from one of council's top strategic priority to address housing, both the increase of supply and the options for the community as part of our strategic plan. So we have done a little bit of a an environmental scan on short term rentals, we have included some stats on short term rentals in Hinton. We have also included a list of common regulatory tools that municipalities do use in Alberta alongside what if any, anything that the town does in response to those six categories. From the, from an administrative standpoint, when we reviewed that bylaw, we actually we thought that there was a lot of good elements to it, but we thought that there was a few key things that needed to be addressed and one of the big challenge from an administrative standpoint is the enforcement of this bylaw. We, you know, it's very, very time consuming trying to enforce this bylaw. Um, there's not, you know, we don't have clear information on where these are located. Um, and that's coupled with little financial incentive for short term rentals to to comply with our bylaw because the, the, at least the initial fine is about six times less of what we're asking for for fees. So, you know, there's little incentive there that we think should be addressed through our business license bylaw. Um, but in looking at this, we have, we have put forward a, a few a few changes or a few amendments to the uh, short term rental bylaw that we think would be, would, would fit within our strategic plan and council's goals. The first was to place a cap specifically on non principal residents. Uh, we are proposing a hundred thirty five units as a number that we believe would comfortably accommodate all of the existing non principal residents that's accounting for a little bit of a margin of error and some that may be in progress. And an inclusion of external secondary suites as eligible short term rental units classified as principal residents. You know, as of right now, we do not address external suites, uh, when it comes to short term rentals, we do have a barely flexible land use bylaw to allow for external secondary suites, but we haven't really contemplated that in the short term rental bylaws. We do believe that this would be, you know, something that would, would help, uh, we, you know, the, being principal residents, it provides homeowners with some additional options, it helps with affordability and we think there's a lot of good that comes from specifically principal residents for short term rentals. And we are also recommending that we look at amendments to our business license bylaw that would look at increasing the fine specifically for short term rental business license to two thousand twenty five hundred for second offense and three thousand for the third offense. Uh, lastly, we are recommending that council in the twenty twenty five budget directs administration to include uh, ninety three hundred dollars for short term rental address identification services in the, for the twenty five budget. This is a, an A I company that can actually come in and scan the platforms on a regular basis for administration. They, they boast about a ninety percent success rate for single detached dwellings and about a fifty percent success rate for the multi family dwellings and for us, you know, about ninety two percent of our short term rental listings are single detached. So we think that, um, you know, this ninety three hundred dollars is money well spent to ensure compliance of the short term rental bylaw. Uh, if there's any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer.
Uh, councillor Race.
Thank you, sir. So would we be giving people ample time to become compliant prior to fining them?
Through the chair to councillor Race, we, in, in the initial short term rental bylaw, we included a grace period, I believe, of about six months. Um, you know, with any new change to a bylaw, you know, we can certainly look at another grace period. Uh, I'm not sure if there will be six months, we can look at a shorter period of time, but certainly, um, that's something that we should consider with the bylaw amendments.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you councillor Race, councillor Haas.
Um, just a quick comment on the question asked, they, I'm going to be honest, church and rentals have had a lot of time to comply already. Um, so I mean, I wouldn't want to see too much time compliance, they've already shown they are, are not willing to comply to what we currently have. Um, but I do have a question um, in regards to the twenty twenty five budget process and the ninety three hundred dollars, I appreciate the the clarification of the A I company and how, what that ninety three hundred dollars uh, would entail. Um, like my question, I guess, is the cap, um, because I see that being valuable for making sure when that cap is hit. Um, you know, I guess it's just a question of enforcement of that cap. Are we going to run into some of the other difficulties, you know, that if we got a hundred thirty five and somebody sets up camp, you know, like, how are we going to enforce that cap, you know, especially if it's somebody that is purchasing a home for the purpose of and like, how is that going to work?
Through the, uh, through the chair to members of council, so the, really how we would manage the cap and anyone that goes outside of the cap will be will be fined on the same basis of anyone who's operating a short term rental without a business license. And that, and those enforcement mechanisms have to be included in the short term rental bylaw. So if we are looking at, you know, the, uh, you know, increasing the, the fines for operating without a business license, we likely be looking at two thousand, twenty five hundred, three thousand, or if what it is currently being two fifty, five hundred and seven fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Stashik and myself.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, it's just the number, the number that was hit upon for the cap, the recommended number of one thirty five, may I ask where that number came from? It just seems like a weird number.
Sure, well, the, the cap was recommended as a number that we can very comfortably accommodate all of the existing short term rentals, including margin of error. We, the scan that we did and the stats provided would dictate that we probably have about a hundred twenty eight non principal residents operating in town, so accommodating for some margin of error because some do, um, are not operating all the time, that there may be a few that come, you know, intermittently onto the platforms, um, we thought a hundred thirty five would, would accommodate the existing. Um, and possibly some that may be in the process of purchasing a, purchasing a home uh, for this purpose as well, we didn't want to, uh, you know, pivot too much on those, but we feel that a hundred thirty five would accommodate all non principal residences.
Yeah, thank you, I get to get put back in queue as well.
Sounds good. Uh, I guess my question for administration is with the recommended one hundred and thirty five units, uh, but the estimation of a hundred and fifty four short term, short term rentals, I guess my assumption would be, um, once we make any further changes to the policy, to the bylaw, would the expectation be for the, the first units to bring themselves into compliance to the hundred and thirty five limit? That would be it, and then anyone who's left out those last nineteen, if that number's accurate? It's like too bad, so sad, you were too late, you had a chance to be compliant, now you're not. And now you won't get a business license under this policy, is that sort of the expectation?
Uh, through the chair, so the, the number of one hundred and fifty four unique listings also includes principal residents. And we're not recommending a cap to principal residents and, you know, by the stats that we have, we actually believe that our principal residents are nearly fully compliant, um, because, you know, based on these stats, we would, you know, we would determine that we have about six, six registered, so this would only be for non principal residents.
Okay, perfect, thanks for clarifying that for me by misunderstanding. Um, councillor Stashik, your, your line.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So previously during discussion regarding, um, unlicensed S T Rs and the difficulty that, that bylaw has in tracking them, there was a question about having a published list of the approved S T Rs in Hinton. And there was some concern expressed about privacy and, um, in, in having that kind of a list publicly available. Is there been anything else put towards that or an alternative regarding if a citizen has a concern that they're, you know, one of their neighbors is, is operating an unlicensed S T R? How they could check to see if it is or not, other than calling bylaw and bylaw having to investigate?
Yeah, through the chair, we actually do provide a listing of all of the, uh, registered and compliant S T Rs, including principal and non principal, so if anybody did have a concern, they would just need to go to the, uh, the short term rental page on the website, take a look at and see if the address that they're looking at is, is available, but that list is published.
Excellent, I was not aware of that, great, thank you very much, that's on the town website?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you councillor, I'm Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and through the chair to administration, this one's a bit of a housekeeping issue, but if we go into the draft bylaw itself, section five, conditions of license, section O for Oscar, uh, I think we're missing a word in here, Reed shall not offer temporary accommodations or permit a guest to sleep in room where the suite at least has one outside window or exterior door operable from the inside without the use of keys, tools, or special knowledge to provide an exit in the event of emergency except where the suite has a sprinkler system. Um, I'm sure when this comes back to us, the word that's missing there will be added.
Uh, through the chair, yeah, that's correct, we were only bringing forward some, some of the material, uh, some of the material changes, but there, there is some cleanup that would be required as a part of this bylaw as well. So those changes will come forward as well. Um, you know, another example is the grace period mentioned, it was currently six months, that would have to be, uh, but that clause is now null and void. Um, there is a, there is some other more housekeeping items on the communication.
Excellent.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Uh, and then through the chair to committee, uh, I'm generally in support of, of most of these recommendations coming forward. I am a little bit, uh, curious about how the non principal residence cap, uh, would be enforced, but uh, it is, is of interest to me. Uh, the increasing fines I support, uh, right across the board, I don't think it makes any sense to have uh, very low fines and higher, higher fees to, uh, get your business license, it's just that was a little backwards and, uh, I tend to agree with the, the ninety three hundred dollars for the, uh, administration of, uh, enforcement, uh, I think with the the business license numbers and if we actually get compliance, it, it, this program pays for its own administration. So, uh, I'm generally supportive of the recommendations from administration, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Haas.
Yeah, and I feel the same way about the recommendations, I do have a clarifying question though for the second recommendation of the fines, I agree with the increase. Are we suggesting that the increase is on all S T Rs or is it on, on non principal and principal? Or is there a different set of, of non compliant fees for, say, principal?
Uh, through the chair to members of committee, so I, I wasn't clear on that point, but it's a good one, but my intention in writing this is that this was specific to non principal S T Rs and then the principal resident S T Rs would just remain on the existing business license, uh, both the fee schedule and the, uh, the enforcement or fine schedule too.
Excellent, no, I thank you for that, I just, yeah, I think that's good clarification for that, but, uh, yeah, overall, I think that every one of these things, I mean, I, I too with the cap feel, but I think with having that ninety three hundred dollar for the address identification, um, you know, company coming in to address that, I think can make a big difference there. Um, you know, and I agree, you know, if we get compliance, it, it'll pay for itself, so, um, yeah. I know there's a motion on it yet, I know there's three different ones, but, uh, I, I feel the same way as Mr. Mayor, so thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Stashik.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, so we're just following up on the point that Mayor Nissen brought forward about enforcement of the cap. About a hundred and thirty five units, I, I think I kind of have an understanding of how it would work, if my assumption is there'd be a hundred and thirty five permitted, uh, non principal residences and once that's full, it's full. Assuming there might, there would be a waiting list. Uh, and then any non principal residents that's operating an S T R would just get fined for the per the fine structure if that passes, uh, and they would continue to get fined, I'm guessing, as long as they're running an unpermitted uh, S T R, does that factor?
That's correct, yeah, okay, so we would, we would continue buying, we will operate a waiting list as well. Likely on a first come, first served basis, um, but, but, yeah, you are correct.
Can I just say follow up, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
Uh, so in terms of continuing fines, if the operator continues to operate an unlicensed S T R, how often would the three thousand dollar fine be levied to the homeowner? And should they insist on refusing to pay it and continuing to operate an S T R, what happens?
Uh, yeah, I can speak to that, uh, through the chair, um. Typically in bylaws, you, it, there's a couple of different ways to do it, you could actually attach a timeline to it, where, say it for example, a week, you have a week to pay it, otherwise you get the second fine. Or you can have, it's two thousand dollars, if you continue to, uh, offend the next day, it's twenty five hundred dollars in addition to that, and the next day would be three thousand and three thousand for every additional day that you operate. Depends how firm you want your bylaw to be.
Your follow up?
Yeah.
So is that a council direction to administration, or administration will bring that back in the, in the draft bylaw? And then also the second part of the question, what if they just don't pay it and can you continue to operate?
Through the chair, if they continue to operate, we could, uh, attach any unpaid fines to the tax law.
Perfect, that's what I was hoping to hear, yeah. So, sorry, if I, I missed that, it, so the, the first part though about the, the time between first fence, second fence, third fence, is that something that administration's expecting a recommendation on, or will it be in the draft bylaw?
Uh, through the chair to members of committee, uh, no, typically the the frequency of the fine is typically up to administration to determine a reasonable timeline for the specific, so, you know, in this case, you know, I don't think it would be reasonable to do it on a daily basis, right, you're usually in this type of situation, you want to, you know, treat people reasonably, give them a, a couple of months to come in and, and start to at least start the process to, uh, become compliant, so tho- those timelines, it all, it typically depends on the type of bylaw it is and, you know, you know, for example, planning bylaws are a little bit more strict when it comes to stop orders, for example, but you know, we would, we would provide them, I would say ample amount of time to get compliant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're right, councillor Haas.
Uh, just to confirm, because that was my question, but I want to make sure I heard it clear, and, uh, so if, if like councillor Stashik said, they don't pay, it can be then through taxation that we, we, um, collect that, those fines, is that what I heard you say?
That is correct.
Okay, excellent, uh, no, I had the exact same question, so, um, okay, I think there's a few more comments on this and then before we continue, so, but.
Thank you, uh, councillor Race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so do we have other fines that are not paid that are attached to the taxes? Is that something we have done before?
Through the chair to members of committee, I, I'm not specifically aware of that, but I would imagine that that is, that is common practice within all municipalities, that is a legal amount owing. And after a certain period, that would be attached, so we, um, I'm not, I'm saying you probably, yeah, yeah. So I'm not intimately familiar with some examples, but that is common practice for the town of Hinton and all municipalities.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you councillor, councillor Volin.
Yeah, so I'd like to make the first recommended, uh, direction, the committee directs administration to bring back the short term rental bylaw to a future committee of the whole meeting of the following amendments. Uh, included cap, uh, non principal residents of one hundred and thirty five units. Um, and then B, inclusion of external secondary suites as eligible S T R unit classified as principal residents. Um, I just have one quick, I guess, question, uh, so that hundred and thirty five, give or take, so that, you know, could be adjusted if necessary, once more research is done, uh, is that, is that the idea?
Through the chair to members of council, yes, we, we spoke about this one kind of at length as administration and there's, you know, we wanted to accommodate for everyone that was available, but I think that hundred and thirty five should be reviewed on a fairly regular basis, um, you know, especially at the start, we would, if we did have a waitlist, we would sort of bring that to council's attention, so we know that, you know, there's possibly others who would like to, and that can be a council decision. You know, the other thing is that this, this can be adjusted as, you know, the the macroeconomics of Hinton changed too, right, you know, if, uh, you know, Hinton is if Hinton has a very limited and tight housing market right now, that may not always be the case, and as as these things, uh, as these things change, we could certainly loosen up on the, the regulations or make them more strict depending on council direction, so um, you know, I think this is one that we will revisit often.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you very much, uh, councillor Haas, uh, did you want to speak to it any further?
No, I've already spoke to it, so, good.
Perfect, councillor Stashik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do have a question. If a homeowner, uh, has their S T R license and they, and it's, it's a yearly business license, correct?
Yeah.
So if they get their business license for a year, are they obligated to operate it as an S T R through that whole year period, or can they transition it to a short term or to a conventional rental property?
Through the chair, so how we've worked, uh, how we do it right now is that this is a yearly license to operate as a short term rental. We don't specify the periods on, on when they are authorized to do that. That gets tricky when it comes to enforcement and proving that, but we do know that some short term rentals, they will, they, they operate as an S T R during the summer months and then come winter months, they may look at it more at a, a long term rental. Uh, but we don't charge them any different than if somebody operates all year round.
Thank you councillor, uh, council, any further discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, and through the chair to administration, uh, regarding the cap, is it administration's view that the the license, so if somebody gets a license for a non principal residence unit, does that license stay with the unit, the house itself, or does it stay with the owner?
Through the, uh, through the chair to members of council, typically those, those business license are not transferable, so that would stick with the owner and the applicant and not necessarily with the owner itself. Thank you.
Council, any further discussion before we call the question? Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, and through the chair to administration, just to clarify on, on point B here, the inclusion of external secondary suites as an eligible S T R unit classified as a principal residence. Uh, when that comes back, is the intent there? It's classified as a principal residence, assuming the secondary suite is in the yard of the principal residence of the owner?
That's correct.
Excellent. Thank you, that answered my question.
Thank you, council, uh, councillor Stashik.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I know you're trying to call the question.
No, it's good.
I just wanted to throw something out there and see what committee thinks of it. Uh, right now that the suggested cap is a hundred and thirty five, yeah. Looking at the, the numbers, uh, down below, there isn't anywhere near a hundred and thirty five non principal residences that are currently registered as licensed S T Rs. I'm just wondering what committee might think about lowering that number to something that are all hundred maybe, I'm just throwing that out there, but I have no idea. The intent, because the intent of putting this bylaw into place originally was to try and rein in how many properties were being flipped over to short term rentals and then of course not being available for purchase by families who might need them, who need to live in Hinton or conventional rentals for people who need to live in Hinton and work here year round. Um, I'm not sure if fully opening the door to let everybody who's got an unlicensed S T R right now jump in is the fairest way to do it, and if we're looking to get compliance with this, maybe capping it at a number that's lower than the number that's out there right now is going to instigate a rush to get registered, I don't know.
Um, thank you very much councillor, I have myself and then councillor Haas, uh, just to speak to your point, yeah, I would support that. Um, it meant it already indicated that that's, that number at this stage of the game until we bring it to regular council, we can look at it and examine it, but in principle, moving forward, yeah, I, I'd certainly support that line of thinking. Um, councillor Haas.
Yeah, and I guess that brings me to, because I agree, and um, my question, uh, that was going to come up later, like, I mean, we're looking at this A I company to do this platform scan in twenty twenty five, but would it be reasonable to look at that sooner before when we create, before we create this bylaw? To get them in to do a scan, to know exactly, you know, what's out there? Infer it with our records as to what is, what is non compliant and what is compliant? And then have that number of what is the cap, uh, based on that, you know, which to me, because it sounds like this, this company is, is, has a great success rate at that and that would give us a clearer picture of what's out there, because I realize it's, it's not easy, you know, but this company is, is so, uh, that would be, yeah, like I would leave this number with that in mind at not anything until further research and then determine at a later date what that cap would be. Um, but I'm curious what administration thinks on that.
Uh, and then did you want to comment on the question?
Sure, shortly, so the stats that you have in the background of short term rentals, those are actually provided by that company. Well, when we met with them originally, they, they, you know, they, they just did an environmental scan of what, what was out there, so so that's where we got, got that information, so, you know, based on what they've provided us, that's how I came up with the, we have a one hundred twenty eight uh, non principal residents as of right now, based on their, their snapshot in time that they provided, so so if there's additional information that would be required, uh, I need to know about.
So if I can follow up then, so there's that hundred and twenty eight, how many of that hundred and twenty eight are compliant?
Twenty one.
Twenty one are compliant?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where, yeah, and I agree with councillor Stashik. You know, I think that if you want to have an S T R non principal minority then you got to get on it, but if you have a gap of, of less than, because I mean, they've shown, oh, obviously they don't want to, uh, you know, because there's obviously more than that, so I don't know what that number is, um, but I agree, the whole, whole exercise of this is to limit the amount of S T Rs, we, we've knocked around some ideas and I, I'm not, uh, I guess for me, I'm not, uh, to admit that I, I originally, but with advice from administration and I understand it, I wanted to look at only, uh, Hintonites to have the non principal, but that's not recommended and I agree with that. This is our other option to how do we, we manage this, so, um, yeah, I, I think we need to have a conversation on the cap. So I don't know how I would feel about that with the motion, but.
Um, thanks, sorry councillor, you.
I'm good.
Mr. Mayor, I had you in queue next.
Thank you, and through the chair to committee, uh, councillor Stashik's point is bang on and looking at the compliance numbers, they're, they're very low, uh, and this discussion is fantastic, but one of the things that I think we have advantage of is we have a little, bit of, we have a little bit of time here. We currently have a short term regulation and the non compliant operators could today decide, they could come into the office tomorrow during business hours and become compliant. Uh, this might be something where we could have administration put out some communications on the short term rental bylaws, maybe, uh, a little bit of, of public engagement, but maybe make the point that we're updating, there's going to be a cap, and if you're not registered, there's going to be consequences. And see how many we can get registered and compliant before, uh, we pass this upgraded bylaw in, uh, you know, two to four weeks' time kind of thing, when, when this comes back. Uh, that would give people who are non compliant Uh, that would give people who are non-compliant today the opportunity to get up, and when we see this back in council, we might have better numbers for where we might wanna put that cap. And I would be very interested at that point in putting that cap very close to our compliant numbers. So, thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, uh, councillor Chambers?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I, I do agree with kind of councillor O'Stashing's point overall. Um, I, I think there needs to be some pressure put on to be compliant. Um, to Mary Nissen's point, I do think that, you know, maybe some communication would be good, saying this is what we're looking at. What numbers can we get, what starts to make sense, but we do need to keep the pressure on and we do need to protect our uh, rental market as much as we can while still providing a bit of this business opportunity. Um, I agree that I was a little more fond in the beginning of what the hint tonight specifically, but I understand um, the recommendation from um, administration, so I, I would certainly be interested in another conversation in the future about what those caps could look like and what's reasonable.
Thank you councillor Chambers, before we go to councillor O'Stashing, councillor Chambers, I don't have a visual on you right now, so if at some point you do need to speak, if you can just sort of belt out that you'd like to get in queue, I will certainly do so.
Yep, that's absolutely fine, and when we vote, I'll be voting with my hand up, uh, emoji.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor O'Stashing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, so kind of hearing from committee, um, I would like to propose an amendment. I'd like to, uh, propose to amend section one A to read include a cap on non-principal residences of one hundred units. If I can speak to it quickly?
Please.
I, I'm still in favor of, of, uh, when this comes back to us with some additional admitt- uh, information from administration regarding how many people have actually registered or are now licensed STRs, of modifying that number again. But I think as an incentive to try and get people to come to the table, maybe limiting it to a number that's less than the total of all the unlicensed STRs out there might be a way to move it forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much, uh, council, any discussions on the amendment on the floor, uh, councillor Hawes?
Uh, I'm completely in favor of that and, and I appreciate Mary Nissen's point, yeah, gives them an opportunity and say, hey, if I'm gonna do this, I gotta do it now and, uh, you know, get more compliance on that, uh, or risk the whatever fines that may be later, so, and it will give us a better idea, uh, so I'm, I'm completely in favor of that. And it also, uh, addresses some of the concerns that have been shown by our residents and by, uh, by others, uh, real estate and everything about the, the impact that, that, uh, short-term rentals would have on our availability, so, thank you.
Council, uh, would anyone else care to speak, councillor Chambers?
I know, I'm good, thanks, I'm in favor of the amendment, uh, so, I, I agree with the number of a hundred.
Council, then we will call to question the, um, rec- pardon me, the amendment on the floor. And that's an amendment to one A to read include a cap on non-principal residences of one hundred and, no, I'm sorry, that thirty, uh, needs to be dropped. Uh, Ms. David Campbell? Yeah, no worries. There we go, uh, to include a cap on non-principal, non-principal residences of one hundred, uh, units. Council, if you could please vote, uh, electronically now. And councillor Chambers, am I correct, in, uh, hearing that you are voting in favor?
That's correct, yes.
Perfect, and then that is carried unanimously, uh, six to none, which will bring us back to the now amended, well, pardon me, now the, uh, direction which has been amended. And then, Jen, if we could, as soon as you're able, perfect, thank you very much. Council, any further discussion on the, uh, direction on the floor? Seeing none, I will read it one more time, that committee directs administration to bring back the short-term rental bylaw to a future committee of the whole meeting with following amendments. A, uh, include a cap on non-principal residences of one hundred units. B, inclusion of external secondary suites as an eligible short-term rental unit classified as a principal residence. Council, if you could please vote electronically now, councillor Chambers, if you could indicate whether you are for or against?
I am for.
Excellent, thank you very much, and that is I'm still waiting on one to show up. On the screen. Oh, councillor Race? Councillor Race?
That would be a yes for me.
Yeah, I have you captured as yes for whatever reason, Ms. David Campbell, I don't have the mayor's, do you guys?
I'm voted yes.
Okay, perfect, so that is, uh, unanimously. I don't know if it's just me, it's like anybody.
Just you.
Thank you. Good. Okay, uh, council, there are still two recommended actions if it's permitted, council, uh, or any further discussion, uh, Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to seek consensus, the committee directs administration to bring back the business license bylaw to a future committee of the whole meeting with the following amendments. A, increase the fine for not obtaining a business license for STRs to two thousand, twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, would you care to speak to it?
I think we already have some.
Okay, sounds good, uh, councillor Hawes?
Just for clarification, because it's not stated in the direction, but I, I, I did ask this earlier, but this is to non-principal. Uh, this applies only to, it's not necessary to word that in the direction, uh, administration is applying, because it, because the the principal ones fall under our, our, our bike, um, business license bylaw, is that correct?
Yeah, uh, through the chair, that was my intent, is that the, uh, the fines was specifically for non-principal residents, so if, uh, you know, if the mayor would like to consider that as a part of this motion, we can certainly do that, that's just a clarification piece.
Mr. Mayor, would you care to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, if we could just to the, the end of that add on non-per primary residents.
Yeah.
Or non-principal residents, sorry.
We'll give that a second to be updated. Council, if you can have a look, just to make sure that, Mr. Mayor, is that reflective of your intent?
It's reflective of the intent, I think, yeah.
Uh, council, uh, any further discussion on the direction on the floor? I'll read it one more time before calling it to question, that committee directs administration to bring back the business license bylaw to a future committee of the whole meeting with the following amendments, A, increase the fine for not obtaining a business license uh, for STRs to two thousand to twenty-five hundred to three thousand for non-principal residences. Council, if you can please vote electronically now, uh, and councillor Chambers, if you could please signify by, uh, acknowledging for or against?
I will be voting for, please.
I am for, it is the upbeat concern for me, but I'm for.
Perfect, okay, uh, and that is then carried unanimously, thank you very much. Just like, on our toes, councillor. Uh, councillor Hawes?
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, I also like to move the committee directs administration to include ninety-three hundred dollars for STR uh, address identification services in the twenty twenty-five budget process. And if I can speak to it.
Please.
Um, you know, this, this says a lot, actually, that a company ha- exists for this reason. Um, that other, you know, like to have an AI company to, to scan this platform suggests that, you know, this is not something that's just for Hinton, it's all over. Um, and I think this is good due diligence, uh, you know, we, we ask a lot of our protective services for enforcement. I think this is a layer that we don't have that can keep on top of this. Uh, and as, uh, our CEO says, this could be a, a moving target on a regular basis, so I think this is good, uh, financial, uh, you know, responsibility, um, you know, for contracted services to monitor this and, uh, and also get compliance as well in enforcement, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, I will go to councillor O'Stashing, then the C A O, councillor O'Stashing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I'm fully in favor of doing this for twenty twenty-five, for sure. I did want to ask administration though, I'm assuming that's about seven, eight hundred dollars a month. Is there any benefit to implementing this now? So to give some tools to bylaw, to be able to enforce even the current, uh, short-term rental bylaw?
Uh, through the chair to members of council, yes, we, we wanted it to be included as a regular thing, but, um, as a part of my budget, I typically have a small contracted services that for little things that pop up and my intent was to use it uh, this year, um, at some point in time to get, to get it for this year, but we can't guarantee that that's gonna carry over, so we wanted council's direction to include this as a regular schedule. The, the other thing I was going to mention to council is that we are working with specifically the Airbnb platform on what we can do in order to encourage compliance within the platform. And so we are working on including fields that when, when you're a host and you want to Airbnb, uh, have an Airbnb and you're signing up, you, you actually have a, a field where you put in your business license bylaw within the platform, and that's part of the local regulations commitment from, from Airbnb and eighty-seven percent of our STRs are on Airbnb. That doesn't cover all platforms and, and maybe that'll encourage non-compliant STRs to move to other platforms. But we are, we are working on that, I don't know if it'll be a required field or an optional field at this point, but something that we are, um, you know, so we are working to, with Airbnb and hopefully other platforms to help encourage compliance on, in that way as well.
Any follow-up, please? Um, appreciate that CEO Nastic was intending to implement this for the remainder of twenty twenty-four anyway. But just to gauge council's support and confirm that, that is something that council wants to see moving forward, I would propose an amendment to, to the, uh, direction. Please, uh, just to, at the end of it, to add and direct administration to contract STR address identification services for the remainder of twenty twenty-four. Is that adequate or should it be until the twenty twenty-five budget passes?
Uh, yeah, through the chair to members of council, so if we are to do it, it is an annual, it's annually, it's ninety-three hundred, so this will run until similarly this time next year.
Okay.
So, so it will, you know, you will.
Well, well, pass the budget passing.
Well, pass the budget passing.
Okay, agreed.
Thank you councillor O'Stashing, I do have a question on that, um, and I'm fully supportive of that, I, I do just have a question, it being committee of the whole, uh, is that, are we okay to make that direction, uh, that addition within committee of the whole?
Uh. Through the, through the chair to members of council, uh, directing administration specifically to expend this, uh, dollars is not authorized through committee of the whole, but this is something that administration is doing, so, you know, I, I, I would consider this an informal blessing to, to move forward with this.
Council, uh, any further discussion on the amendment, uh, on the floor? Seeing none then, uh, we are, so, sorry, we are gonna have to see a, uh, an amendment, sorry, Jen. Uh, there we go, uh, so the amendment that we are currently looking at, uh, calling the question is an amendment. Uh, and so in addition, that we add and contract STR uh, addressing services for the remainder of twenty twenty-four, councillor O'Stashing, does that capture your intent?
Uh, I think so, I think administration has an understanding of the, you know.
Council, uh, any further discussion on that? Councillor Race, uh, councillor Chambers, right now I can't see you, so if you do have, oh, now I can, if you have a point of discussion. Seeing none, then we'll call it to question, uh, that we add and contract STR addressing services for the remainder of twenty twenty-four. If you can please vote, uh, electronically now, and councillor Chambers, if you can indicate whether you are for or against?
I'm voting for.
Perfect, uh, and that is unanimous, uh, with six in favor. Uh, so that brings us back to the, uh, now, um, changed, uh, motion, the amended motion. And that is that committee directs administration to include ninety-three hundred dollars for STR to address identification services in the twenty twenty-five budget and contract, uh, STR addressing services for the remainder of twenty twenty-four. Council, any discussion on this? Seeing none, then we will call the question, if you can please vote electronically now, and councillor Chambers, if you can please verbally indicate.
I'm voting for.
And that is unanimous, six in favor. Uh, and that brings us to, uh, the end of the recommended action items, council, do we have any further discussion or direction to come out of this item? Councillor Hawes?
Probably there's just one more, Mr. Chair, the committee directs administration to bring back the short-term rental or business license bylaw to a future committee of the whole with the following amendments, we have to, you guys give me that as well.
I'm sorry, which page, or just for my own reference, I think I'm.
One, three of three, under the options.
Oh, oh, I see.
Number four. Unless that isn't required, that it's gonna come back with anyway, or?
Administration, is that a, a necessary, uh, direction or is the intent to bring back?
Uh, through the chair to councillor Hawes, sorry, were you talking about option four?
Yeah.
Uh, to bring back, no, um, no, I think within the, the actual motions themselves, we will be bringing back some
Okay.
Uh, a bylaw amendment with these changes included.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, perfect, thank you very much councillor, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Chair, I'd like to seek consensus, the committee directs administration to put out public communications regarding the short-term rental bylaw update process, uh, and with the intent of improving compliance. You need to get to it. Well, as it is, Ms. David Campbell types that out, uh, if I could speak to it for a moment. Uh, I just think that we need to communicate both the fact that we are going through this process, this is taking action on the housing situation here in Hinton, and I think the number of our residents will be happy to hear that we are taking those kinds of actions. Uh, but additionally, as we mentioned earlier, increasing compliance in the short term, uh, will hopefully, when this comes back to us, give us better uh, numbers, more solid numbers for what sort of limit we're going to put on the non-principal residence units, so, um. That's mine, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, council, uh, any discussion on that, we'll just give it a second to appear on our screen. Uh, council, does anyone care to speak to it, uh, while we're waiting for that to pop up? Just briefly for myself, I'm certainly in favor of that, I think that's a, a fair piece of communication to go for our stakeholders. Uh, and we'll just make sure that this captures the mayor's intent, uh, that committee seek consensus, that administration put out public communication regarding the upcoming changes in the STR, uh, by law, Mr. Mayor, does that capture your intent?
That captures mine, yes, thank you.
Councillor Hawes?
Um, I'm just wondering, propose changes?
Propose.
And, uh, actually, just that they aren't made yet, so.
Mr. Mayor, you're good with that?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, perfect, uh, council, any further discussion on this? Perfect, uh, then we will call this to question, we'll just wait for it to pop up, I'll read it one more time, then we'll move electronically. Uh, call the question that committee seek consensus, that administration put. Uh, called the question that committee seek consensus that administration put out public communications regarding proposed changes in the upcoming STR by law. Counsel, if you can, please vote now. And Counselor Chambers, if you could indicate, please?
I vote in favor.
Perfect. Uh, and that is six in favor. And counsel, any further uh direction, discussion, questions on this action item? Seeing none, we will move on to item five point two, the recreation level of service policy. Uh, and I will turn it over to Ms. Way from Parks and Recreation Culture.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through to the remainder of committee. This evening, I have for you the second iteration of the uh recreation level of service policy. This item was last before you on, excuse me, May fourteenth of this year. Um, it's my understanding that during that meeting, there was some robust discussion, uh specifically committee had directed that uh administration incorporate some language regarding revenue enhancement and promotion. Um, as well, there was further discussion around fees and the programming that's offered. Um, so the information report in front of you provides some additional information regarding those three items. Um, first and foremost, uh, we did include two sections within the new policy that um are that highlight our efforts with respect to um revenue enhancement and promotion. Those can be found in section six thirty three and eight one. Um, ultimately, the reporters just wanted to highlight for committee some of the ongoing activities that we have with respect to generating additional revenue through those mechanisms. Regarding the fee policy, so a few weeks ago, um, we extended our current fees through to the end of the year, as we will be bringing forward um the new fee structure in the coming weeks. Um, council will see at that time a significant change in the number of fees. Um, both to ensure that we are mainly to ensure that we are recuperating at a minimum. Um, like really downloading those costs to the user and recuperating as much as we can um for our programming. And lastly, um, it talks specifically about programming. Largely, we only, um, the sort of signature we've been wrecked for many, many years has been that the pool does the bulk of the programming. In twenty seventeen, the town eliminated um a recreation coordinator who also at that time um provided um schools outreach parties, for example. Um, largely that role did a lot of programming around the calendar, right around the school calendar, lots of stuff for kids. Um, that was eliminated years ago. Um, so we are looking at um a bit of a restructure, moving some things around to be able to um more effectively deliver direct programming to our community that typically within Hinton has been done from more of a grassroots approach, really leveraging our relationships with either civic agencies or user groups. Um, at this time, I can take any further questions.
Thank you. Counsel, uh, any questions? Uh, Counselor Hawes?
Um, thank you, Ms. Way. That's great to hear. Uh, happy to hear, because I think that's one, I guess, uh, uh been a rant by by some community members that we do we do enough programming, and I'm I'm happy to hear that. Taking some more initiative, I guess the question would be with this restructure, wh- what what kind of timeframe might we be looking at for restructure and starting to maybe see some of those start to be developed?
Thank you for that question. With respect to the restructure itself, um, completed before the end of September. Um, with respect to programming, we do have a couple of things on deck that we hope to bring forward through the budget process. Of course, you can have the body, but we will need uh some resources to offer the programming. So we're fleshing that out now, and it'll be before you before uh or during budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel, any further questions? Seeing none, there are two recommended actions uh in the report, if it's the will of council. Uh, Counselor O'Shawson?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move that committee accept this report for information. Uh, and let committee direct administration to bring a recreation level of service policy CS seven two zero three to the regular meeting of September third, twenty twenty four for decision.
Hey, Counselor, do you want to speak to it at all?
No, I don't think so. No, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, uh, any discussion on that? Seeing none, I will call it to question by reading that committee accept this report for information and that committee direct administration to bring the recreation level of service policy CS seven two zero three to the regular meeting of September third, twenty twenty four for decision. Called a question, counsel, if you could please vote now. And Counselor Chambers, if you could vote, or pardon me, uh, signal your intent, please?
I am voting in favor.
And that is unanimous, six in favor. Counsel, any further questions or direction on this action item? Seeing none, then we will move on to five three, the parks and sports field level of service policy number CS seven two oh five, also presented by Ms. Way.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through to the remainder of committee. Um, before I deliver the report presentation today, I just wanted to practice this conversation. Um, essentially by saying that this item before you today is a capture of what we complete to date based on the resources we have. It is not my intention, um, you know, to suggest that the efforts of our staff are lacking in any way. So I just wanted to preface there before we begin. The scope of the policy before you today um has continued along the same vein as we did with our level of service policy for trails. So we parsed out the different um parts that make up the park service area. Um due to how robust and how many things that we will need to cover. Um, so this po- uh policy here and level of service covers only parks and sport fields within those park spaces. So things like the cemetery or boulevards, uh, green spaces on cul-de-sac, those are not covered within the scope of this policy and will be addressed in short order before the end of this year. Um, so ultimately, we've gone through, uh, the policy itself indicates what we what we do accomplish today. And the report um details where we may be lacking or potentially um struggling to meet targets that, you know, other communities of similar size um may do on a regular basis. Um, I can go through section by section, um, or I can take questions at this time. However, I will just say that the ideal intent would be to do one of two things today, either make a recommendation to bring this forward as presented, knowing that to make any adjustments is going to be quite challenging without understanding the full picture of the other, the other piece of the uh upcoming level of service policy. Um, but also that if we were to trigger any changes or request any changes, I can certainly bring back some information on that during um review of this policy again. Um, but to make any changes will be quite tricky at this point.
Um, I guess I have a question before we move forward, and it's procedurally. Um, so if council was to target one of those reported areas and say that we'd like to understand the particulars of increasing the level of service, you know, as it applies to, I'll just pick one, playgrounds uh or sports fields. Can uh is admin comfortable if we tackle those on a one by one basis and then the sum of those, like if you have three that we're particularly interested in looking in, uh, you would just bring those back as a a whole report? Together with that, sort of makes sense to admin, or?
Uh, yeah, through the chair. What we had thought is that if there are some items that council wants to talk more about, uh, that council can make those directions and we would include that and call it a parking lot, but it will have that outstanding direction. And as we work through all of these policies, we'll know where the gaps are that council wants to address, and we can bring that forward, maybe in a more comprehensive picture. Uh, because, you know, if we are talking about resourcing, resourcing is not specific to this service necessarily that, you know, a staff member or a piece of equipment may cover a number of different areas. So we would keep a running tally of any area that council wants to discuss more about, and we could bring that forward and maybe one more comprehensive report for council to discuss.
Perfect. Uh, and counsel, I guess then I'll just speak to something and it'll I guess it'll impact whether or not I need to pass the chair to whoever's next in line. Uh, for myself, I am, I'm very interested in knowing what the impact would be uh of increasing our level of service as it comes to maintaining standards with our sports fields. Um, you know, inclusive of the running track, as is included in the report. We have a lot of play services that get used a lot, and I know that is certainly one area that's difficult to maintain without the adequate resources. Uh, and it's it's quite labor intensive, and right now we rely a lot on our user groups to help help that out. I think as a town, it would be at least it would be good to know what the final, uh, the financial impact would be moving forward to to up that level of service. Uh, if that's not the will of any other counselors sitting here, I guess my intent would be to pass off uh the chair briefly to to seek to seek some consensus, but I'll I'll leave that open to council. Counselor, are there any questions uh or directions that you'd like you seek? Uh, Counselor Hawes?
Yeah, I guess what came to mind when I was reading this is I recall last budget, where there was an intent to possibly bring forward um that there are some areas in town that may have not they've been neglected. Let's just use that word. Um, example would be in front of the library. Let's just use that. Uh, but there was a, I thought, an intent, if I recall, in twenty twenty four discussion of the budget of potentially looking at contracting and getting us back to a level where our services then could maintain them, because they've kind of gone beyond where it's gonna take a lot of time and effort to 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 clean them up and but I understand, or if I recall, it got taken off the table. And I guess my question is, is is that the intent of i- going forward with twenty twenty five budget that if there are some areas that have gone kind of to the wayside for a while, they need some sprucing up? Um, i- that administration is prepared to bring that in our next budget uh discussion, or is that not? Or am I off base, or I I do I'm recalling incorrectly?
Administration?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Hawes, through to the remainder of committee. Um, that item was rumbling around. I'm not sure at what point it got removed. Um, however, I don't think it would be sufficient. Um, if there would be the possibility to examine that case if we were willing to potentially categorize which beds, right? Because I mean, those aren't covered as part of the parks and sports fields, but this is a perfect example of how there's interplay between them. Um, so at this point, no, I don't think it would be effective to simply just throw a bunch of money at the flower beds around town and hope that our current staffing levels could address those and maintain them into the future. Um however, if we categorized and chose maybe just C three or a certain number, sure, that is always possible. But we'd have to examine that, but that that's a good example of one that is um been a challenge.
Okay.
Counselor Hawes, do you have any follow ups with that, or are you you good?
No, I'm I'm okay for now. And with the rest of council.
Miss Davy Campbell, the uh, and I apologize unless the council knows, uh, would be next up, uh, following myself and the deputy mayor's roster. And I apologize for putting you on the spot.
Uh, I believe it's Counselor O'Shawson.
Okay, Counselor O'Shawson, are you comfortable if I'd like to seek a direction? I just want to not run roughshod over anything you might want to make uh any directions. Would you be comfortable taking over as chair for a moment?
True.
Maybe so. I will pass the uh the chair over to uh Counselor O'Shawson. Um.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McGee. Counselor McGee, wanted to make a direction.
I do. Uh, Miss Davy Campbell, I'm gonna have two. They'll be uh worded identically, so I'll just very slowly go through the first part. Just let me know when you're good. And admin, if I need to be flex- I am flexible on this. If the wording doesn't work, just let me know, and I'm I'm happy to to fix things up. Uh, counsel, direct administration. Or sorry, thank you, committee direct administration to provide a report providing information related to increasing levels of service related to uh, and I will start with sports field. Then I'll have a second one that's very similar that uses a different category. Uh, and then just very quickly, I'll speak to it. Uh, sports fields is an area where actually here a lot of concerns uh as it relates to safety and playability. I know encroachment of vegetation, really everything that's identified in here, uh, it's a real issue, and I I would like to know what it would cost us really uh to try and enhance that. So I I will read it to counsel.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McGee. Maybe you have any comments or questions? Counselor Race?
Thank you, sir. Could I have Counselor McGee and repeat that?
Yeah, absolutely, Counselor Race. It's a a committee direct administration to provide a report, providing information related to increasing level of service related to sports fields.
Did you have a comment or question, Counselor Race?
No, sir, I didn't hear him clearly. I just needed a repeat on that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Race. Maybe any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing nothing from committee then. If we could see the direction, please? Okay, I'll call the direction request question, the committee direct administration to provide. Sorry, Miss Davy Campbell, my motion, it just says move on it. Okay, the direction request that committee direct administration to provide a report, providing information related to increasing levels of service related to sports fields. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll call the question. Maybe please vote now.
I'm voting in favor.
You, Counselor Chambers, so that is carried unanimously. Counselor McGee, you got another request or direction request?
Absolutely, and I just want to make sure that I am giving council the right. Uh, there it is, good. Um, so, Miss Davy Campbell, I'd like to provide the same direction uh but related to vegetation management. Uh, and then if I could just speak to that, um it's, that's pretty broad and far reaching. There's a lot going on with vegetation management. I am, however, particularly interested to uh in the uh prospect of weed spraying uh and the overall impact and change we've seen in the community since two thousand fifteen. Again, I don't know what the net cost is gonna be, so for myself, getting that information back, uh, having seen what it looks like today versus what it used to look like and what the costs are, I would be good to know.
Counselor O'Shawson.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you. Wondering if um we are intending to bring a um OBC with respect to spraying, is that sufficiently, would like a a supplement for as well?
Yeah, sorry, Counselor O'Shawson, if I may. Um, yeah, I think a supple- only because it's all encompass- there's a lot going on there. Uh, weed eating, um, other vegetation management, that sort of thing. I think it would a little more holistically would also be good. Um, but in addition to that, the the spraying is also important to me, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McGee and committee. Are there any comments or questions? Counselor Hawes?
Uh, I want to say definitely in favor of this one, and I'm happy to hear, and thankfully that you said that, because frankly, I was gonna bring that forward as a council member for OBC is spraying. Um, you know, I know that there are some concerns around that, but I grew up in the light of spraying and and the benefits of it, and we are seeing more and more weeds, uh, you know, growing in our community, and um it's, we can't catch up to them, and you know, so I'm happy to hear that, uh, because I think we need to have a more fulsome uh conversation about it. I think part of that, I hope that we have a little understanding of the reason for the the decision back prior to twenty fifteen, why we don't do this anymore. Uh, for some of us that weren't on council at the time, uh, because I'd I'd be happy to hear that and understand that a little bit. Um, but I agree, I think we need to have a more fulsome look at, you know, which in my mind kind of includes those areas I was mentioning before. You know, it because even though it's a area, it's still vegetation that's growing and and look at how can we keep up with those areas and and I think this is the one thing that I hear more and more, especially during the summer months, of course, but uh, you know, is can we beautify our community a little bit better? And I think these are ways that we can do that. So thank you for the direction, and I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. Maybe, anyone else? Well, I'll chime in quickly. I I meant to forward this too. I think uh responsible weed management, including spraying, has a place in the community. Uh, I think since we've stopped, we've seen a huge increase, not just in the indigenous
Indigenous relatively harmless weeds, like dammy lions, but invasive species as well. I've I've. Had comments from many people about the level of. Uh, I believe there are oxide daisies and the Canadian thistle that are overtaking many of the natural areas in town. There's some. Uh, you know, responsible weed spraying program to help manage some of that might be might be in order. I'd like to uh, get some more information about that.
Thank you. Committee, the last call, any comments or questions? Councillor Haas?
I guess just a quick question, and and it's in regards of specifically the running square square space. Um. I'm just curious, is is administration also looking at different options? And and I I asked this question because I remember going to, uh, I think. A year or two ago, the A M conference, and there was, interestingly enough, a company there that sold hemp. As an option, it's a very thin layer of hemp that chokes out weeds. They don't, they let the moisture through, but it doesn't let the weeds through. Um, and it was, it was identified as that area might be a really good, because you can just lay it out, but is administration. Uh, going to be also prepared to maybe bring some different options? Uh, that would be also vegetation control to for council's uh, consideration during budget?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. So as part of vegetation management, there are many options. For example, mowing is one way of dealing with weeds. Is it effective? Debatable. Um, so, yeah, we will have various options. For the, whether it's a bed or mowing, or mowing in parks, or just mowing a boulevard. Uh. You can slice it a much different way, so we'll have a couple of options.
Thank you.
Maybe, anything further? Okay, nothing then? If we could, call question, call the direction request question. The committee direct administration to provide a report providing information related to. Increasing levels of service related to vegetation management. Maybe if you could please vote now.
I'm voting in favor.
You councillor Chambers? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Councillor McGoon, did you have anything further?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Have the chair back.
Thank you very much. Uh, council, are there any further directions? Uh, councillor Haas?
Yeah, I think I'm mostly on the same lines, but you you know, and I could get granted, this is just giving a report of what the level of service and in the increase of it is. And that is in regards to playgrounds, um, especially, you know, the sand. You know, the moving away from sand. I know some of our our places have moved away from that. Uh, however, there's still sand, and I see that, um, you know, it's checked, but it's not necessarily really, um. Uh, monitored that closely or whatever, so I I'd like to actually, you know, include. Basically, the wording that councillor McGoon had, but with playgrounds in there. Thank you. And if I can, you know, I think this is a a great benefit too, is, um. To help also the the community understand, because these are some of the areas that they voice concerns of, but. You know, what then would it look like? Financially and and to the organization with that level of service, but I think this is an opportunity for us. As council to understand that, and also for citizens to understand that as well, and get feedback from them, because maybe some of these areas are. Things that they would like to see an increase of level of service, so this is an option, so. And maybe that is, I I don't know if it's a, you know, looking at capital plans in the future as to. Eventually uh, eliminating sand altogether over time, uh, but I I think. Uh, that that should be something we we consider as a council as well, so, thank you.
Okay, uh, council, any discussion or questions on the direction on the floor? Seeing none, uh, we will call the question that committee direct administration to provide a report. Providing information related to increasing level of service related to playgrounds. Council, if you can please vote. Sorry, councillor Chambers, do you have?
I'm in favor.
Oh, uh, if you could please vote now.
Okay, sorry, I'm in favor. I'm ahead of myself.
We got you. We are unanimous in that, six in favor. Council, uh, any further directions from this item? Question?
Question.
Councillor Haas?
Yeah, so I I'm just curious on the, because we went through a lot of conversation on on park signage or signage. I should say with the 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 wood and everything. Um, so I guess I'm just curious, because it's here, in here, but. Didn't we kind of increase that a little bit already, level service?
C A L?
Uh. Through the chair to councillor Haas, the uh, the first. Or the benches and the park signage, and speaking about the log structures, we're we're planning on bringing forward a. An operating business case and a capital project plan for all the replacement of a lot of the. Rotted logs around town that would need to be replaced, and the uh, maintenance schedule, and some maintenance proposal for an O B C as well. Okay. Great, thank you.
Council, anything else? Seeing none, I am going to call a seven-minute break. Actually, we'll call it an eight-minute break. Bring this nice and even with uh, five forty, please.